Okay, let me call to order the Fox County Groundwater Management Agency meeting for today, Friday, March 11th. Please rise, pledge allegiance. Andy, you lead us, please.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Chairman Mulholland?
Here.
Director Craven?
Here.
Director Waters?
Here.
Director Borchardt?
Here.
Okay, Bob Baranio, and normally Andy's sitting out there, but he's not, he's sitting here, so, okay, that's the only alternate I see. Okay, agenda review, Tully.
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and there's no changes, so I assume, do we need a motion to approve, or it is what it is?
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
All right, there's the motion. Okay, there you go. In a second, any objection? Hearing none, so move. Public comments, opportunity for the public to address the board. John, on non-agenda items.
I hope it's not on the agenda. John Matthews, Pleasant Valley County Water District. I just wanted to speak to the board and bring the board up to speed on a situation we have out at PV. We received a letter from the GMA staff about a month ago telling us that there were large parcels of land in Pleasant Valley that had not reported their IAA. PV is a little bit unique in that we have to report our pumping, but we don't have any crops, so we obviously sell it to people. And we met with staff right away, and they were very good on that. We met with Jeff and Tully and Mandy and Alberto. And we started on trying to unwind the, you know, where the water went, who used it, and how they used it. And we've made a lot of progress. We're about two-thirds of the way done. We had, for two months before that, we had gone out and had gotten the comm codes from everybody in our district, and we only had one person that didn't have a comm code in our basin. And we were assuming those people would report. I don't know if some of those people assumed we were going to report, or some of those people, we found out, just didn't report. They had talked with the GMA, and for some reason, they didn't file their reports. Some had property in the PV and the PTP, and when they checked the box, where'd you get their water, they hit United on each and every one of them. So that didn't give us any credit. There were about, I know part of the issue here is you want to get good data, and we do too. I think we were at about 4,900 acre-feet of water that we basically were missing. People had not reported on it. I think we're down now to about 2,000 acre-feet. We're committed to finding that water. I don't know that we're going to get it down to the exact one acre foot, but we're going to get those. We've still got a couple of large blocks of property where the people haven't reported, and we're committed to have them do that, and we'll hope that we can continue to work with the GMA on that. So if you may have questions, I know that's a kind of an odd thing, but...
Okay, anybody have any questions?
On that?
Okay, no, thanks.
The other good news, I would say, is...
Yeah, that's what I thought you were going to talk about first.
It's raining, but no, there is water in the pipeline now coming from...
The great program.
Oxnard. So we've been using it. Like all big projects, it takes a little bit of tweaking, and we said as soon as we started up, we had the help of Tony Stafford with Cam Rosa that helped us flush all that Brian out there. And as soon as we got it going, we knew it'd start to rain, and so now we've got a full pipeline, your reservoir that we're, you know, trying to manage and keep as empty as we possibly can so we can keep it going. We're getting roughly about 30 acre-feet a day, each and every day, so that we don't have to pump.
All right, good job. Okay, anybody else? Okay, board member comments, anybody? All right, let's go to the consent agenda. A motion to approve the minutes, I guess, yeah, and it's really not to approve the minutes, it's to approve the consent agenda, which happens to be a one-item issue. A motion in a second, any objection? Okay, hearing none, so approved. Regular agenda, item number two. Kathleen.
Good afternoon, Chairman Mulholland and directors. For the record, my name is Kathleen Rydel. I'm here to present item two. It's a long title, so I shall read it. Resolution to initiate a request to the California Department of Water Resources to modify the Bulletin 118, groundwater basin boundaries for the Los Poses Valley Basin, Pleasant Valley Basin, and the Oxnard Subbasin. As you will recollect, back in January, I came before your board, and your board authorized agency staff to explore two sets of boundary modifications. Those modifications include two scientific boundary modifications, one along the western boundary of the Los Poses Valley, that was along the Wright Road Fault, the other being the southern boundary, which was the Springville Fault. And then the other set of boundary modifications is a scientific, which is the Springville Fault, along the southern boundary of the Los Poses Valley Basin, and the western boundary, which was a jurisdictional boundary. And at that time, John Orr, Neil McGuire, said that they would assist staff, and they have since. So since we met with you, and you told us to move forward on that, the initial notifications have been filed, and so they are available for the public to see on the DWR website. In addition, we have been preparing the documents that need to be submitted to DWR once a resolution is adopted, and hopefully today. So, moving forward with that, our final thing is to get a signed resolution. It's required by the Department of Water Resources in order to proceed with the boundary modifications. Our deadline to complete all this is March 31st of 2016. The data that supports the boundary modifications include water level data, and then you see right here is the proposed southern boundary of the Los Poses Valley Basin. It's an effective barrier, which is the Springville Fault, which is part of the Simi-San Rosas Fault system. And the other is the western boundary, which is a transitional zone, and that, we have two different options for that, the jurisdictional and the scientific boundary. Additional information that supports the boundary modifications include water quality data, and you can see here that water collected in the west Los Poses, which is that red underneath the gray box, which represents Pleasant Valley water, and the green shaded box, which represents Oxnard Plain water. Those two different water qualities are very similar, so you can see that this supports a transitional barrier, as opposed to, it's very different from the Pleasant Valley, which shows that there's a more effective barrier between the Los Poses Valley and the Pleasant Valley Basins. So this is a familiar diagram. It was presented to you in January. It shows the two different scientific boundaries. This is the Springville Fault. Whoops, we slipped a slide. So the Springville Fault is on the south, and on the west is the Wright Road Fault. And those are the boundaries, the southern boundary between the Los Poses Valley Basin and the Pleasant Valley Basin, and that western is between the Los Poses Valley Basin and the Oxnard Basin. The other set of boundaries that I did not have a slide for at the time is this jurisdictional boundary. So again, the southern boundary would be the Springville Fault, which is supported by the Technical Advisory Group, and the jurisdictional boundary, which was also supported by the Technical Advisory Group, as that is a transitional boundary. The blue boundaries with the arrows shown are the Department of Water Resources Bulletin 118 boundaries that will stand if these modifications do not go forward. And then to show the justification for this jurisdictional boundary, it follows property lines, and it maintains the wells with the land served. So that is why it zigzags up north from the spring, southern end is at the Springville Fault, and then it goes up to the Bulletin 118 boundary on the north, pretty much following the Wright Road Fault, but honoring property lines. So in conclusion, today, you have one or both of the boundary modification, one or both of the boundary modification packages can be submitted to the Department of Water Resources. DWR wants to know what is your preferred option, should you pick both, or you can choose one or the other. And then agency staff today, we're asking for your direction as to what way you want us to proceed, which of the options do you want to select, and a resolution needs to be adopted. So before you is a draft resolution. Should you pick the scientific only, I have marked what you need to delete from the existing resolution in your package. And then should you choose the scientific and jurisdictional, the scientific being the southern boundary, the Springville Fault, coupled with the jurisdictional, which is proposed to honor property lines and the wells, keep it coupled with the land that it serves. So you would cross off that second sentence of that one paragraph. And in all cases, the exhibits need to be updated, depending on what you select. On the second page, if you choose to select both options, with the scientific being the preferred of the two options, you would want to maintain the first paragraph, whereas if you want the jurisdictional being the preferred option, and the scientific being, both scientific boundaries, being the second option, you would want to maintain that second paragraph on that page. And as I stated, in all cases, the exhibit identifiers would need to be modified based on your direction. So, agency staff's recommendations are to approve resolution number 2016-2 to initiate a request to the California Department of Water Resources, and to adopt the scientific modification of the shared boundary between the Los Poses Valley Basin and the Pleasant Valley Basin, that is the Springville Fault, which was in both packages, and was supported by the Technical Advisory Group. And then your other option is to, for the western boundary of the Pleasant Valley Basin, to either adopt the scientific modification, which is the Wright Road Fault, the jurisdictional modification, which is that proposed by the Los Poses Users Group, and also supported by the Technical Advisory Group, which follows along parcel lines, or, number three, for this western boundary, to accept both the scientific and jurisdictional modifications, but choose what is the preferred option, so that DWR knows which the agency prefers. And with that, are there any questions?
Anybody, anybody on the board? Steve?
Thank you very much. Two questions. One, what would be the rationale for submitting two options and preferring, and identifying which one you preferred? Is the rationale for that, that if for some reason, DWR doesn't accept the one, they know the other one has been applied for also, and they could go to that?
That is correct, because there is a hired standard for the jurisdictional boundary to meet that, meet all the requirements for that, should for any reason, they didn't like our submittal. They could fall back to the scientific, but that is an option, and...
So it would give you, it would give them a fallback position to something that we think's better than the current boundary, that everybody seems to think either of these is better than the current boundary?
That's my understanding, that it's a point A to point B, blue line, Bulletin 118 boundary.
And then my question for Tully. Does staff have a recommended or preferred option here?
No, staff does not have a preferred option.
Okay, great, thank you. So, since, while I have, I just would offer to people, the question I have in my mind, I'm open on this, I think this is just the classic kind of thing, where you get a lot of input, and you try to make a good government decision. And I know that there's interest in the jurisdictional boundary, and the question I have is twofold. If we go with a jurisdictional boundary, what do we do if for some reason, property lines change, lots change, et cetera, how do we address the argument of, why would we go with a jurisdictional boundary that could change when the scientific boundary gives you more certainty in terms of that? And then the other side of that is, how do we enforce rules where water coming from technically, scientifically, another basin, going into, you know, being regulated by people on a different basin? Those are the two questions I still have in my head that I'm wrestling with, and so I'd appreciate any comments from board members that could inform me more on that, and also from the public here. That's what I want to hear about. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments before I go to the public?
Steve asked my question.
Okay. Thank you, Kathleen. Have a seat, you may get called again. Let me go to the public. Anybody want to address this issue?
Good afternoon, Chairman Mulholland and the board. I'm John Orr. I'm with Del Nordy Water Company, and I'm here to support the jurisdictional boundary. And I want to, at the beginning, dispel any idea that Del Nordy is involved, or LPG was involved in any kind of an end run in this issue coming to you at this time. To be honest, it's, we're in a spotlight that we didn't expect to be in. It's because of the nature of the other request that was being made on the southern boundary. My understanding is that under the rules of DWR, if you ask for one boundary change, then it's better to ask for others. On that basis, there was a suggestion made that they could ask for this western boundary change. That is a problem for Del Nordy and for LPG, and I wanted to explain that to you. But I want to explain that there isn't an end run here going on. It's actually, we thought we were going right up the middle. We started in December of 2014. I was contacted by LPG. They had been working on a number of issues, as you know, for a long time. Suddenly, they became interested in their management plan. They realized or felt that they needed to include Del Nordy's service area in that plan, and they asked that we consider it being a part of it. And we said we were interested in that, but we were concerned that we wanted to have some say in the process, if we became involved. We wanted some assurance that our wells and land would go together, so that we wouldn't be, as I said at the last meeting, our mugs on one side and our wumps on the other. That's the concern that we had. And then the third thing is, as you might expect, we were quite concerned that we didn't want to be in a place where we could get subject to two replenishment assessments. I mean, we wanted to make sure that we didn't get doubly taxed if there were going to be in effect replenishment assessments. And at that time, the Oxnard PV group hadn't assembled yet, hadn't gotten together. We held meetings, Del Nordy did, we hosted them, we invited others from the west, what we call the west-west Los Poses, other landowners similarly affected. We invited participation by Tony Morgan from United, and I'm not trying to throw Tony under the bus here, he was very helpful to come. And we were speaking, and we asked him specifically about the management plan, what was United's position, because they were the organized body that we thought would be somebody that might have some objection to it. And we had unanimity that, as from a management standpoint, it would be better if the Del Nordy area and the other areas in the west, there's lots of other landowners other than Del Nordy involved here, it would be better if wells and land were kept together. And so we proceeded on that basis. Simultaneously, LPG was good enough to review its voting procedures. We had a process, and we were given, that is, the west, west Los Poses was given a couple of votes out of, I did it, I can't remember, either seven or nine votes, so that we can, so that we could be a part of that, the actual discussion process and the formulation of the plan. And we proceeded after that to actively attend LPG meetings, and then along came Sigma. LPG and Del Nordy processed its allocation plan, the LPG plan, as you know, and it was, as I understood, it was lauded by this body. We then went on to create a charter, again, approved by this body. And now this issue arose, not because we brought it up, but because staff wanted to, was asked to do a boundary modification on the southern boundary, not the western, but the southern. This issue has come before you. And I want to be clear that insofar as the southern boundary is concerned, we have no issue, and we think that it's scientifically based, and it's a good idea. And I don't think anybody that I know disagrees with that. On the western side, the question is, which boundary do we use? Do we use the DWR boundary, or do we use this new jurisdictional boundary? And either way, Del Nordy is aware that there is still going to have to be coordination. And for the issues that were raised by Oxnard PV and Jürgen's letter, Jürgen Gramco's letter, we understand there is going to have to be management, and there's going to be coordination there. And we also understand that there's going to have to be coordination with regard to assessments, if assessments, if there are activities in any replenishment assessments, if there are replenishment assessments by, that benefit Del Nordy, I suppose it ought to be, or the west-west Los Poses, it ought to be involved in that. If, on the other hand, they don't, then maybe it's assessments, if there are some, ought to be paid to the other. But I think this has to be looked at on an individual basis. So we don't see this as an issue that's going to where we're going to gain any advantage. We just think that for management purposes, it doesn't make sense for our wells and our land, which is served by our wells, to be separated. And so we would advocate that the board consider the jurisdictional boundary as the better of the two. It's been approved by TAG. You've received letters, I think, unanimous support from LPG and its constituent members. The issues that have been raised by, and I would also say that the issues we're talking about here are going to be repeated throughout the basin. There's going to be, as you, when you have five GSPs, you're going to have edge, as Brian Bondi calls it, edge matching issues. We happen to be involved in one. It happens to be the first one up. But it seems to me it would be incumbent on this group, on the GMA, to create a process so that these things don't come up one by one. And that process probably should not be either top-down or bottom-up. It's going to have to be some idea where, if parties can work it out, and if it hurts no one else in the basin, that's the boundary. And that's how it's done. If, on the other hand, there are issues that may, where two parties would agree to the detriment of the basin, we can't have them. We don't disagree with that. So our, again, we would urge a vote for the jurisdictional. And Neil McGuire has some comments.
John, before you leave, any members have any questions for John? Yeah, Steve?
I very much appreciate the, your comments about, from a management standpoint, you don't want to separate your land from your wells. And that, the argument on the other side certainly is, the more often we do that, for example, the more likely we have sort of a scientific separation of the water, where it's coming from and where it's being used. And, you know, rules and regulations in one basin, and the water being used, you know, sort of outside that basin. Can you address for me your perception of why that's not an important argument to consider in this situation, and what kind of safeguards there would be? And I'm really trying to think about long-term policy.
Right.
I mean, over and over again, we find ourselves going, why did they do that 30 years ago? Why'd they do that 20 years ago?
Right.
Because now a new problem has cropped up, as, you know, people start sinking wells, you know, in one area because it's not actually part of that jurisdiction, and they're sending the water. So can you help me with that basic concept?
Well, it doesn't matter what boundary you have. If you take the DWR boundary today, as I understand it, the Saticoy Country Club wells are to the east of it. It's land, and part of where it applies it is on the west. So it doesn't matter where you are, you're going to have those issues. And they're going to have to be addressed in some cooperative way. And it's going to, I think what we haven't had yet, because we're just getting started on this, Sigma's new, and we're just asking, this is the first boundary adjustment I've heard of, we're going to have issues where there's going to need to be coordination, and there's going to have to be, probably the parties should work it out, and that's kind of what LPG did. I mean, we, the only party we worked it out with was an informal, and I, you know, I'm not, again, I don't want to pin the things that Tony said to, you know, and embarrass him in any way. He was just trying to be helpful. He, these guys, they're more knowledgeable than the rest of us, understand that whenever you have these things, you do have transition areas, and there are going to be separate arrangements for them.
Yeah, Mr. Orr, I'm really trying to ask these devil advocates questions for my sake, so I don't want, so I just want you to, because my next question, you pointed out, you know, the current line creates this problem.
Right.
But this current line is, the current line is not at the scientific boundary. If you have a scientific boundary, then you will, if we follow strictly, I mean, what's the policy we should follow all along? If we, if we scientifically, if I could, if we, if we follow a scientific boundary all along, we will have these split jurisdictional issues, and we'll have to come up with some way to deal with that. But at least we won't have the water from one basin being used in the other. Now, that assumes the scientific line is hard and fast, and I think that's a, I think that's a gray area, and I recognize that. But still, at least you have some kind of scientific evidence about, you know, the separation of the basins. So the example you gave me about Saticoy, that doesn't, the question in front of us is, do we go with the scientific line, where we know at least as best as we can, the water will be being regulated by the area where it is being pumped out of, you know, in terms of use? So, again, could you try to answer the question, how is this going to deal with the arguments that would say the scientific line gives you more long-term certainty that you won't have problems crop up? have problems crop up? And the final thing I want to say is, you said the stakeholders ought to work it out and we have to also represent future stakeholders that may get stuck with a policy that was convenient at one point in time, but it doesn't work for the public overall.
I understand.
Can you help me with that? I mean, I'm genuinely curious.
I really, I mean, I think that as far as that, that you, it may, it may help to hear that from somebody that's a more tactical person, that is, from Brian Bondi or someone who's dealt with this more. I can't tell you that I'm an expert on whether, the only thing I would say is, if you have a ridge line or if you have a fault like we have in certain areas of this basin and it's clear that the water is, that, I mean, that would, that might, that might be a clearer line. But in this particular case, there isn't a clear line, as I understand it. That's what I'm told. I'm not a geologist. Maybe someone like a geologist can answer that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. John, before you go, as I've read through your letter that you guys sent and the other letters that everybody else has sent, obviously, there's a huge support for the jurisdictional boundary. And I think, as I've thought through this, whether it's a jurisdictional boundary, DWR's line or the right road, quote unquote, scientific line, you're still dealing in an area of mush. And every one of the letters, I won't say everyone, there's, but the bulk of the letters, the vast majority of the letters, recognize that whatever we agree to doesn't prohibit the jurisdictional agencies to assess the fees that are appropriate for that agency. And that if, in fact, at some future point, when we create a sustainability plan, there has to be this edge matching process. And every one of the letters I've received to the board, to the agency, talks effectively that those kinds of details are going to have to be worked out. The GSP calls for that, makes, makes reference to that process, understands that process has to take place. My only, my only concern is, I'm not seeing, this may be for Al and staff, but I'm not seeing in this resolution an acknowledgement that those edge matching issues need to be need to be worked out in the future and may or may not be part of this resolution.
I don't think it's in the resolution as it's stated now.
I'm sorry?
I don't think it's in the resolution.
No, it's not.
As stated now, no.
And that leads to, I think, a little bit what Steve was saying, is you are the first out of the chute. And that's always the gamble when we do this.
Sure.
And a new issue is brought before us and we try to make a policy.
Right.
That we can sustain logically. And there is clearly, in my mind, a number of areas within our boundaries that we're going to have to address this kind of issue.
I agree.
And thus, I want to make sure that if this is our first cut at it, we send a message to folks that if we go through a process of making some minor adjustments, it does not sabotage, delay, presuppose what this edge matching process needs to be. And I think when I read through Jürgen's letter, and I assume Jürgen's going to speak to it, but as I read through Jürgen's letter, I think that's what the crux of his letter is. We agree with the concept of moving, but we reserve the right to work our way through our GSP as you work your way through your GSP, that the GMA has a responsibility of meshing together. And there may be some fallout of that down the road that's going to require some kind of balancing of either funds or numbers or allocation. And no one is protesting that.
No, and I don't doubt that it's probably, and some of that's going to have to be on an almost a case-by-case basis. I mean, you may have a situation, if you were, if you had a project that clearly adds water to the spreading grounds, and it was bought by Oxnard, it's going to benefit Del Norte. We know that.
Yeah.
And we shouldn't be, and we're not, we won't be surprised by that. We wouldn't be surprised by an assessment.
Yeah.
But there may be another project that may help, another area of the Oxnard Basin that is remote as to us. And maybe, just maybe we'll work out a policy in the future that says, even if it's remote as to the amount of your assessment or an assessment, you pay part of it like they paid part of another one. In other words, we're all interrelated. Whether it's going to be direct benefit or whether it's going to be static pressure or whether, what it's going to be, this is just the process we're all going forward on, in my opinion.
Yeah. And I'm not proposing that we put into this, I'm not proposing we hold this up with the exact pluses and minuses for this case. Conceptually, I want to make sure, either it's in the resolution or we understand at the board level, at the public level, that there may come a point in time where we're going to have to revisit this edge matching issue. It is called for in the GSP. And at that point in time, I don't want people standing up and saying, wait a minute, you drew the line over there and we're on the right side and we're no longer, whoa, 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 whoa.
Well, if it's in our best interest, we might do that.
[laughing].
Obviously, we can't. I mean, that's, we're all in this together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Neil Maguire on behalf of Del Norte and I'm also a member of LPG separately as well. I did want to echo some of John's comments and then address some of the questions hopefully that we've heard from the board this afternoon. Obviously, the jurisdictional boundary is designed to further the goals of Sigma and to improve groundwater management within the Los Poses and as well as the Oxnard Basins. We understand the issues that are out here. Just to echo again, this is not designed to put up a partition, as Chair Mulholland noted. Regardless of where the lines are drawn, existing or one of the two options, these issues exist, they have to be worked through. I think the OPV letter that Mr. Gramcal wrote was exactly right, that in an ideal world, we would be managing, or I should say, considering all of these issues concurrently. Because of the process that DWR has set up and because of the timelines that are involved and because of the desire to address the Springville Fault Boundary, which I think, again, everybody concurs, is something that needs to be done. We're presented with this issue now and maybe the timing isn't perfect, but again, we are going to have to deal with these issues regardless of where that line is drawn. We do think that the LPG boundary does further the groundwater management in the best way. And I want to address Director Bennett's comments with regard to a jurisdictional boundary versus a scientific boundary. Within the Los Poses Basin, we have our west and our east sub-basins. We have what I think most folks would say, a fairly hard scientific boundary between the two. There is a fault. It does provide, as I understand, a pretty substantial barrier to subsurface groundwater flow. With that said, we still have to manage cross-basin issues because we have a mutual water company that takes water from the west and moves it to the east. And we have a county water works district that takes water from the east and moves it to the west. And so the mere presence of a scientific boundary does not necessarily resolve these issues. In fact, I think the right road fault, which I'll talk about a little bit more in detail, I think does exacerbate those. Because you do have property lines that are being severed, you do have properties that are being severed from groundwater resources. And I think that presents more of an opportunity for people to play the types of games that I think the GMA wants to avoid in terms of, well, I have property here, I've got a well over here, the boundary goes right between, I don't like what Oxnard's doing, I'm going to drill a well in Los Poses and I'm going to go participate in that area. Obviously, we have to coordinate, that's a given. But once that is done, once people have looked at yields, looked at allocations, looked at replenishment assessments, I think the best approach and the one that furthers Sigma the best is to have service areas, properties and groundwater resources, sources managed together and hopefully avoid most of those issues. I did want to talk a little bit about the right road fault modification, just because I think there was a comment from the DIAS that everybody sort of agrees that these are two good options, one is better than the other. I think I would like to take issue with that. I don't think that the right road fault is a particularly good option. I don't think that it furthers Sigma goals for the same reason that I just said, first of all, that it does more so now have a tendency to sever property lines and to sever groundwater sources. But I also just don't think that right now, the evidence demonstrates that this is an appropriate scientific boundary. And when you look at the DWR regulations, they obviously contemplate jurisdictional modifications, they give an example of an adjustment on a county line basis, for example, and then they obviously contemplate the scientific adjustments as well. But they have some particular criteria that comes into play for the scientific modifications. And what they are looking for is the presence or absence of a hydrogeologic barrier. And that's defined as a subsurface feature that significantly impedes groundwater flow. So this is coming from the DWR regulations. And I think what we saw from the slide that Ms. Rydel put up earlier is we really don't have that in this area. We don't have that significant barrier that's impeding groundwater flow. So I would say that from the perspective of what we present, what the board presents to DWR, that it's not a 1A or a 1B situation. I think the LPG proposed line is beneficial from a groundwater management perspective. I think the right road fault is really not supported by the scientific evidence, it's not consistent with the DWR regulations. And my concern is that if we move forward with the right road fault boundary at this point, either as a sole option or as a 1B, that if DWR ends up selecting that option, that we're going to be foreclosed from revisiting that issue in the future. DWR has contemplated that they will have additional submission periods in the future. We don't have a lot of specifics about when that will be. With that said, there's probably going to be a reluctance by DWR to revisit a boundary modification that it already considered. And so my concern would be that if we pick right road, the right road fault, again, even as a fallback option, it really isn't scientifically grounded, but it's also going to make it more difficult to move forward with a modification in the future that might be selected to address some of the coordination issues. So we've done our best with the LPG proposed line to look at the properties and the groundwater wells in the area, to see from a management perspective, you know, where things really ought to be. There are some areas that were actually carved out from the existing boundaries, the DWR line. Really, Del Norte is a driver in terms of what's being encompassed with the jurisdictional boundary. It's possible that that's not perfect. I mean, we recognize that. We did our outreach, we tried to do our best job there. We, as John mentioned, we met with United staff. It may not be perfect, but if we go with the right road option right now, my concern is that we would never be able to revisit the issue from a jurisdictional perspective. And I do think that that's ultimately going to be the best option. So again, we would recommend that the staff, or I'm sorry, that the board move forward with the jurisdictional boundary and only that boundary at this time. And that if the board is not inclined to do that, that we just eliminate the right road fault option entirely, though. Director Bennett, you had mentioned a comment about lot lines moving. And yes, it's a possibility. I think what we know now is that the existing DWR line and the right road fault scientific boundary, we know that that severs property lines, we know that that severs groundwater resources from the service areas and the properties. We can't predict, obviously, what would happen with, with potential lot line adjustments in the future. But I would just say that the risk of that happening is still very minimal compared to the results that we would see from any of the other alternatives. So I think that concludes my comments unless the board.
Anybody have any questions?
I have questions for Kathleen now.
Okay.
After he said, but Andy, looks like he had a question?
Okay. All right, thank you. Kathleen?
Could you put the slide back up, please, clerk? Yeah. Could you, the gentleman made the contention that doesn't think there's a real strong scientific basis for that being a significant fault and, yeah, the map.
Okay, one, I would like to go back to this figure, which was provided by Crestview Mutual Water Company to originally demonstrate that their wells were in the West Los Poses Basin. But if you look at the, it's this Magenta Square, which is the Pleasant Valley water, and then you see it on the other ones, you can see the similarities between the, the distinct difference between Pleasant Valley water and the Oxnard water shown in green and the West Los Poses water shown in red. You can see that these are similar and that's close to that boundary between that transitional zone between the Los Poses Valley Basin and the Oxnard Basin. They're very similar. But as you move away, you can see down here, you can see that the West Los Poses water.
See, where are you now? Okay, there you go.
At this figure right down here, you can see that there's a significant difference between the blue shape, which is West Los Poses water. So as you move away from that transitional zone, the water becomes more distinct as you move more into the West Los Poses Basin. And you would expect it to have a better, a different signature. As you're closer to it, it's a leaky fault. And if we go over to the boundary here, you can see as far as a geologic feature, and we don't have all the good cross-sections and such to show you any offset units, but you can see that clearly in the plane, it is flatter, smoother. This is a USGS topographic map. And clearly, on the east side of that fault, the topography is higher, suggesting that there's been uplift in the area. So it would suggest that that is a fault, that there is something there. And we don't have a lot of documentation on the right road fault. We know that this area is a transitional, it's a leaky fault, as opposed to this fault being a more effective barrier. And the one between the east and the west Los Poses is a very effective barrier because you see 200 feet of head difference between water levels in the east Los Poses and the west Los Poses.
Could you, could you point to that, that one again?
The effective barrier?
Yes, right.
Okay, let me go to a different slide.
No, no, on that map, please.
Okay. On the boundary between east and west Los Poses?
Yeah, just show, show it on your.
That fault would be in the subsurface somewhere in here. It doesn't show up, I don't have that fault.
Great, okay.
So that, what you see in the Potentiometric Surface Maps is a major separation, a very effective barrier between the east Los Poses and the west Los Poses. Whereas we see in water levels that this is more of a transitional zone. It doesn't have that distinct, really firm barrier. We are seeing the distinct, very effective barrier down here along the Springville Fault.
So a question I have for fellow board members, what if we have property that straddles a very distinct big fault like that? I mean, do we have property boundaries be the primary factor that we use? That's just one of the questions that I have out there. Or should we, and where we have a really strong distinct fault, my guess is we still could potentially have property boundaries cut across now, you know, in terms of that. So anyway. Andy?
I think you have that problem with, either way you go. Neil pointed out, on the east and west basin, the two different pumpers are on both sides that go back and forth. And the way it was explained to me, the Springville Fault, because it's a spring, it's a barrier, you have springs in that area. So it makes a good scientific reasoning to do that.
Well, I would agree that you'll have it either way you go, but that's, leads me to the question of, so should that be the standard you use or should you use the scientific standard just to say, that's what you're trying, what are you trying to achieve? You're trying to achieve a match between regulations and water basins or a match between regulations and properties regulated?
I think, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure the answer to your question and I'm not sure it's the right question. Okay? I think, I think the question is, is there logic to a jurisdictional boundary that makes more sense than the right road boundary? In my mind, there is. That the jurisdictional boundary, from a historical perspective, from looking at my ancestors, they own the property, they're delivering, they own a well, they're delivering water to their property, long before we knew wherever all these goofy lines went. It's your family, your, all our families that have got a long history here. That, to me, was logical. It's worked for a long period of time. The rub in this thing is that we now have entered into a point where we have to account for effectively, where do the water molecules go and come from? The Sigma has given us that plan. And the Sigma says, we, and I'm paraphrasing, and Tony Morgan's out there to shoot me down if I say it wrong, and staff. if I say it wrong, and staff is here at GMA to shoot me down, so bear with me. What the CIGMA essentially saying is, we recognize that there are clear boundaries, there are no boundaries, and there are mushy boundaries. And in the world of mushy boundaries, you folks that are doing this sustainability need to come up with a plan that is sustainable on both sides of the equation in such a way that you balance that act through this management area. In my mind, that basically says, I don't care where you put the line. You can put the line for whatever reason you want. You're still going to have to deal with the same issue. There is no clear line, no clear delineation. So really, the political jurisdictional line is a line of logic and convenience with the caveat that no one is going to stand before the GMA at some point in the future and say, you know what, I don't think I should have to pay that fee, even though you demonstrated that fee should be paid, because you drew a line some years ago that put me on the right side and not the left side. And that would be my solution to the problem. And where my pushback would be is either in this resolution, which we're going to have to send back to staff, they're going to have to X out different items and clean it up so that it's something that I can sign, because I'm not signing this the way it is. Okay? So we all understand that. But I would include either in the resolution, or wherever Al says we need to put it, a statement that says, this resolution assumes and mandates that all parties will follow the GSP, and these are my words, and Al may not agree, will follow the GSP process to figure out how you balance these edge-mapping lines. It's what I've heard from all of the letters, the bulk of the letters have said. John Orr's letter says that, Jurgen's letter says that. The Keyagis letter didn't actually say that, but I've heard it from Brian, I've heard it from, all the other letters have said, and I can pull out those sections in there, that have essentially said, I'm going to pick one here, if I can just find it. Okay, here is, this one is from John Pope, just picked it up. Lastly, we do understand that groundwater pumping and related issues, i.e. replenishment assessments in the West Los Poses will need to be coordinated with the Oxnard Basin to ensure that both basins are managed in a sustainable manner. And to me, that's what our primary responsibility is. So from my standpoint, I'm okay with the jurisdictional, do I think it's perfect? No. Do I think any of them are perfect? No. But the long-term responsibility for us is to create a sustainable operation on both sides of the equation, and that's going to require additional work. We don't have that work done today. It will come out of the GSP process. And here's an example of one letter that addresses that issue. Here's the letter from, this is the letter from Andy, this is from LPUG. And it's in here someplace, there's, it's in here someplace, I don't remember where I read it, but you wrote it, it's in there. So LPUG is saying, we understand, somewhere in there, I read it, I can't pull it out and waste everybody's time.
It's in the Charter.
Yeah, it's in the, okay. So the fact of the matter is, is I, I'm not sure if we're going to gain anything by arguing possible property line changes and all those things. I'm not sure that, because all that's going to have to be accounted for in the GSP anyway. So, and maybe that kind of refocuses us.
I appreciate that. I appreciate your attempt to try to refocus it. And I think there are multiple issues here. And the real issue, I would agree with you, is we have to manage these basins sustainably. If we can find a way to say, hey, we're going to go with jurisdictional boundaries, or we're not going to follow scientific boundaries, but we're going to find a way to make sure that both basins don't, neither basin gets disadvantaged as a part of that. I just don't, I don't have that language in front of us right now, so I don't know how to do that, one. Two, this is the first, and we could be setting some real precedents here. And so if I, I'll just run this, you know, so you have District A and District B, and if District A wants to expand their boundary to take in some of the wells from District B coming this way, I would imagine that there's going to be very few people in District A that are going to oppose that. That's more water coming in to what they may be able to regulate and might help them be able to get to their sustainable yield. The people in District B over here may or may not be here to really, you know, Jurgen is here representing, you know, the Oxnard Plain, you know, people to some extent. But, so when we say the stakeholders have all gotten together, I'm not sure, because I think over and over again, where we have these edge-matching issues, people will mostly be in favor of receiving wells in. And most people, I don't think, will show up to say they don't want those wells to leave because of a variety of reasons. So can you help me with that?
Yeah.
That's the other question.
Okay. My answer to that would be, that is the responsibility of the GMA to make sure that it holds the proper forum process, that we don't start drawing lines without a full public review, simpler, similar to what we're doing now. I think in this resolution, or in some other possibility, resolution, policy statement, I don't know, that when it comes time for questions of basin boundary adjustments, the GMA will, A, B, C, hold a public review, ensure that there is, again, we've used the term no net detriment, but there's a balance that we follow the GSP. So I think you can procedurally close the issue, that a group comes in and says, hey, we think it's a good idea to pull water from X over here all day long, we have to make sure that we have a chance to let X stand up and say. And if they don't stand up and say, that's our job. Our job is to challenge those questions, and I think we can do that. So how we build that into the whole mix, I don't quite know. But I think that's how you solve that.
It seems to me that the jurisdictional concept allows the GMA a lot more flexibility in making the sub-basin plans work together. I appreciate Director Bennett's concept on kind of relying on science. I tend to go that direction myself. But in cases where there aren't clear demarcations, clear differences, like we have this Wright Road situation, we afford ourselves the better opportunity to manage things, to do this edge-matching, by going with jurisdictional boundaries versus the scientific route. Because one of the things that stuck out in my mind when reading these letters was the, over and over, it was mentioned that the allocation plan that LPUG has been working on takes into account all of the things that are going on in that perceived boundary of the Los Poses. It just so happens that that west-west part of the Los Poses has historically taken its water from the Four Bay. It started doing it in 1910, and it made really good sense to go to the point where there was the most water and send it back uphill. So in recognition of that kind of thing, it makes sense in my mind to this jurisdictional concept. And it, I think, doesn't set us up necessarily to be District A, District B, and I think we're going to have oversight over that anyway. That'd be my opinion.
Thanks. Kathleen, hold on a second. I see Robert obviously wants to speak on something. Robert, hold on a second. Charlotte, do you have anything, any comments?
No, those are just questions.
Okay. Robert.
Robert Aronio, Consulting General Manager on behalf of Crestview Mutual Water. First off, I'd like to say that we thank staff, especially Kathleen, for taking advantage of the study that we did and showing the Springville Fault and allowing us the opportunity to participate in moving the south boundary to whereabouts there is a clear delineation. In response to Supervisor Bennett, your question there about water agencies moving and taking advantage of water, that's not what's going on here. You have to represent or understand that in the West Los Poses, there's approximately 13,000 acre-feet a year of water that's available. 3,000 acre-feet a year of that is supplied by Del Norte. So they're about a third of the basin yield and the basin demand, and keeping them with the basin and whereabouts they have the greatest impact makes the most mild sense. This is not a grab in order to move water resources. This is a matter of documenting and managing what has been the historical use and the pattern of water in the basin. So in that regard. Second of all, or I'm sorry, third of all, you have to understand or keep in mind here that this process and this jurisdictional boundary was developed using the very outline in which you tasked us to use. You said, LPUG, go forth, meet your stakeholders, come to consensus, and bring back a plan. We did, and then we vetted that through TAG, the scientific committee that you put together in order to vet these out and got their blessing with it, and now we're bringing it to you. My concern is if that gets unserved or circumvented, and you go with something other than what we are proposing to you, because, and it does not have any better basis than what we're proposing to you, you're now cutting out the legs for the very process in which you set up for us to follow. So I also strongly urge and agree with going with the jurisdictional boundary as the only option. And don't give DWR a fallback that can tie us and bind our hands going forward.
Okay. Anybody else?
Jurgen Gramco here in behalf of the Oxnard Pleasant Valley Agricultural Landowners. We don't object to the jurisdictional boundary. We, you know, we think it makes practical sense. What we're concerned about is water moving from one basin to another. And if, if there needs to be an offset for that at some point, it needs to be quantified, and the offset either needs to be in the form of replenishment fees or supplemental water. Los Poses Basin has Keyagis water available. Keyagis could go to Oxnard. I mean, at this point, how it's done doesn't matter. We would like to see this resolution have a section in it that refers to the groundwater emergency regulations that was cited in the Del Norte letter. Article 8 talks about coordination agreements, and Section 357.2 talks about inter-basin agreements. So it is contemplated that these circumstances arise. There is a framework around which to resolve them. And we ask that you include a reference to that framework, and with that, we would ask you to support the jurisdictional boundary.
Do you have any recommended, specific recommended language, or just a reference to that?
It is the language from the draft GSP emergency regulations from DWR. So I think all you need to do is cite those regulations, cite Article 8, and cite Section 357.2.
Thank you.
As exhibits in the resolution. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Janette. Oh, did you want to speak?
Um, yeah.
You moved up there, so I thought you were going to come up.
I was debating, I guess I think you're getting.
Okay, well, thank you very much. It was nice to hear from you. Bye-bye.
Janette Lombardo, California Food and Agribusiness Advocates. I have farmers on both sides of this line, and I have some of the property on both sides. So I'm trying to be like Switzerland here. As Robert pointed out, there's, this is a large quantity of water. And if you take it in reflection, what John Matthews said earlier today, he's been working for a very long time to get the Great Water Project in, and that's about 4,000 acre-feet coming into the basin now, and that's what's going out, or has been going out since 1910, apparently. So we, I think everybody realizes it's a transition area. I don't think people realize until we did the Irrigation Allowance Index and actually mapped where the water was going, they realized how many wells and how much water was going to the other side of the hill. I think that everybody wants to do what's fair for everybody on both sides. One thing I'd ask that you bear to keep in mind is, is the cost. And that's one thing that no one's really seemed to be talking about, is ag has to be viable. And as Jurgen just stated, Los Poses does have access to Keyagis water. The Oxnard Plain has limited imported water capabilities. So if they have to replace that water to get to their sustainability plans, it's going to cost a lot. And, you know, some of the studies that I'm working with, you know, replacement water, it looks like it's $1,500 an acre foot. So I think, I want to protect all parties. I really wish this agreement that everybody's going to reference in moving this line was done ahead of time, was done now, because I'm afraid when it gets to the agreement, the cost of the water might be an issue. The farmers who may want to pay it, they may not be able to grow with that cost of the water. So I think the best way to protect it is what Jurgen just said. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Paul?
Good afternoon, GMA Board Members. Paul DeBisher for, representing Pleasant Valley Mutual Water Company in Camarillo. I haven't thoroughly analyzed this from our perspective, but we are in the area north of Los Poses Road, between Crestview and out to Ponderosa Drive in Camarillo. So a lot of the hashed area that is identified is part of our district. We serve about 1,600 customers, mostly domestic customers. I'd say about 25% to 30% of our area is in that hashed area. So by moving the boundary south, you will be splitting our service area between the Los Poses Basin and the Pleasant Valley Basin. So I would just propose that you kind of keep an eye, we're some of those, from a small district that doesn't contribute a lot, doesn't say a lot at these meetings, but please consider and maybe allow us some time to consult and figure out what exactly this means, means to our, to our service area and customers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else? Okay. Let me go back to the board. We have, we have a staff recommendation, we have a series of letters, we've heard from the public, and we have a series of choices. Choice is to accept a pure scientific boundary adjustment, a judicial boundary adjustment, or both with a recommendation. So let's have that discussion. What do you want to do, if any? Or do you want to accept, I guess the fourth option, is accept one of those, send it back to staff to clean up the documents so it's okay for us to vote on, people know what we're voting on, and it's something I can sign. And do we want to add anything to that document to cover some of the issues that I've raised and others have raised? Yes, sir?
If I could, if I could ask, do we have time to have it go back to staff? I mean, it's by March 31st, so I don't know that we have time for it to go back to staff.
Do we?
Staff, can you help us with that?
Mr. Chairman, we would have time to come back to the next meeting.
Yeah.
The March 20th. That's correct. Do March 31st, we would have time.
In fact, one of the reasons of having this meeting is contemplating these kinds of changes so we can do the cleanup. So the heavy, the heavy debate needs to be on today so that we can get this thing done.
So we could, we could clean it up.
On the 23rd.
On the 20, yeah, whatever it is, 23rd, 24th.
Okay. So I would just like to offer this, that if we can find that language that builds that protection we have in there so that in the future we have those problems, and I think I haven't heard anything better than the reference that Jurgen just came up with in terms of those two documents, and maybe Kathleen.
Kathleen is dying to give us the answer.
If you guys have some. But I do want to say that, so I would, I would say we go with what we're hearing from Los Poses in terms of that. I want to emphasize, you know, this is the time for us to ask these questions as we're beginning our very first boundary adjustment and try to frame these issues. But I've got, I have great respect for the fact that what we have in front of us is something that people have worked hard on, and they've come up with generally a consensus, at least in the Los Poses area. And so Mr. Aronio's comments about, you know, I would, I would not undercut that cost, you know, just willy-nilly. But we do need to examine these questions, because as you just saw, this gentleman came up and said, when you make this change, you're now going to start cutting mine. You're always going to be cutting properties, you know, like crazy, you know, as you do this.
Well, my only comment to Paul's issue would be that there's going to be, have to be, when we develop the GSP for these areas, they're going to have to do some edge mapping on your boundary.
Sure.
And this edge mapping process, we haven't done it. It's coming down the road because it's part of what the plan calls for. This is the first time we've addressed it, so.
So this conversation has highlighted those things, and I think that's healthy for us from that standpoint. So I'd be supportive of what I believe I've heard from Los Poses, which is going with exclusively the jurisdictional boundary, but directing staff to make sure they come back with that language that we can see in the resolution to create the protections that you were referring to in your comments.
Kathleen.
I would like to provide for you a section from the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. It is Chapter 10, it is Section 10733, Department Review of Plans. This is what the Department of Water Resources will have to do for reviewing each of the groundwater sustainability plans. Subsection C, "The department shall evaluate whether a groundwater sustainability plan adversely affects the ability of an adjacent basin to implement their groundwater sustainability plan or impedes achievement of sustainability goals in an adjacent basin." It further goes on to state in the emergency regulations, Section 355.4, "Criteria for Plan Evaluation," subsection B, Part 6, that whether the plan will adversely affect the ability of an adjacent basin to implement their groundwater sustainability plan or implement achievement of sustainability goals in adjacent basins. So clearly, the groundwater sustainability plans will have to address whether it impacts adjacent basins and this edge-matching, and it's already part of what has to be built in and that DWR will be evaluating, and whether we want to have that in our resolution or just stand with the requirements of Sigma.
What I would suggest is that we decide whether to go with Plan A or Plan B. I believe the judicial solution is the correct one. I would direct staff to change the document to reflect that. I would ask Al, that you sit down with staff and figure out where is the best place to put the transition language so it's out there clear, and if it means referencing the legislation or some paraphrasing, or however you want to do it. Standalone document that we have to do simultaneously? I, we have to do, we have to do something to make sure that if we do this edge-matching process, or we do basin adjustment process, wherever they may crop up, everyone's going to be treated the same. That is, it still has to pass a sustainability on both sides of that line because that's what the law requires us to do. And how do we build that into either this resolution or make sure we don't get pushback down the road that people say we can't do it? Does that make sense? Al, you understand what I mean? You folks okay with that? Charlotte, you okay with that? Steve?
I agree.
So should we make a motion?
All right. So this is a, this is a motion item, so we need to make a motion to direct staff to bring back to us a clean version of the resolution. Where'd I put it?
Can we just direct staff to do it? Because the recommendation wants to have a motion to adopt it.
Okay. So everybody understand what we're voting on?
Better state it.
Charlotte, you want to say it again?
In other words, you want to state that, I think what I've understood everyone to think about is that we're thinking we like the idea of the scientific boundary between the Los Poses and the Pleasant Valley Basin, and the jurisdictional boundary between the Oxnard Basin and the Los Poses Valley.
And we're not going to offer a choice to DWR. We're just going to say that's, that's the boundary change we're going to make.
Correct. Okay? And we're going to direct staff, with council's blessing, to come up with certain language that addresses some of the issues that we've heard about today, that Jürgen raised and others have raised, that I've raised, to make sure we clearly lay down the process so that we have a common methodology in future boundary changes. Okay? That's what it is? Want to make, so you want to make that motion?
I think we just did.
All right, I'll make that as a motion.
If this is, I'm not sure how you're going to get from having a resolution for one specific boundary change that would lay out a plan for everything we're going to do in the future. It seems to me that's a second action that's required, saying this is our policy, to do it like that. I, I'm not sure how that, you can say it in here, but I don't see how that's going to tell future boards. I mean, there's going to be someday, Lynn, when, when you're not here, and someday when I'm not here and the rest of us aren't here, and if we're going to have something that we want to tell them how we want it done, it needs to be in something other than one resolution that says this is a boundary change.
I think, I agree with you. It should be in more than that, but it should also be in our first resolution. So we go, look, we put it in this resolution, so it's clear, and then we also adopt it as part of our policy.
We need it as something else, because if it's going to direct future actions, it can't be just in here.
So we should have staff make sure they incorporate that into our policy.
So are we not trying to follow the guidelines set out by DWR in terms of the formation of GSPs?
Yeah. So how they want to incorporate that is, so the reality is, we, Al, this is purely direction to staff. Do we need a motion on this direction to staff, or we, have we done enough that everybody understands what we're agreeing to? What do you want?
If it's just direction to staff, it doesn't need to be a formal motion.
Okay.
But the option that they're bringing back will be the one Director Borchard described, which is a scientific change between Los Poses and Pleasant Valley, and a jurisdictional change only between Los Poses and Oxnard Basin.
Okay.
And the caveat that Lynn has added.
And, and the additional language that the chair has.
Just, just for the benefit of all of us so that there's some teeth to what we're doing, what I'd like to do, if it's, if you'll agree, is do that as a motion in terms of our direction to staff, so that it's clear and the rumor mill doesn't float all over the place, and we get another 50,000 letters, that this is the direction we're going, if that's what everybody wants.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, that was the motion. That's the second. Any other discussion? Jessica.
Chair Mulholland?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director Waters?
I'm going to stay in for Brown Act Concerns, because I drafted a letter.
Okay.
And Director Borchard?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's go to item number three.
Good afternoon, Chair Mulholland, Directors. Item number three is a relatively simple matter. It's merely to present to the, to the board the charter for the Water Markets Group. And I think the charter that, that's attached is relatively clear, and it really highlights what's in and what's out of scope for the Water Markets Group. And really, what they're looking at then is the structure and the operational mechanism of water trading, what are the requirements for participating, what are the market rules, and any limitations that may be on trade, on trading, and what types of contracts are required for doing pumping allocation transfers, and then reporting requirements. I think the charter has given the group a good opportunity to move forward, and as you can see on the charter itself, there's a rather substantial number of people involved in this. And I think that's relatively clear, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions? It's a receive and file item. The public have any?
I have one issue, and my name is listed on as the project team, and I go to meetings and I listen, but I don't participate. As we kind of discussed a year or two ago with participation in committee meetings, it wasn't thought proper that directors should be active participants.
Yeah, and I was at one. I was at yesterday's meeting. It's the only meeting I've been to, and I got trapped into saying something. Edgar set me up. Matt set me up. That's what it was. Okay. So you have a, you have this charter in front of you. It's a, it's a receive and file.
So moved.
Do we have to give it any other blessing than that, Tully? Other than that?
Nope.
A motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Chair Mulholland?
Did you get a second?
Yes, you're the second.
Oh, I'm the second?
Charlotte was the motion. You're the second.
Chair Mulholland?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes, I'm going to vote yes, and I just want to make one quick comment, and that is, I think this is an incredibly complicated and incredibly important, important issue. I mean, it's a, it's a whole new field for us to go into, and so we really want to do this thing right, and I think it's a great, great first start.
It seems like we have the right people in it, too.
Okay, continue.
Director Waters?
Yes.
Director Borchard?
Yes.
Just as a quick comment, Edgar and Matt are in the room. I got to tell you that I am so pleased with all the groups that we've put in play to try to figure out a solution to our long-term survival. The work that El Pug has done, Opug is doing, the, the allocation group is going to start working on, the technical group. It is really amazing, when you sit in that room and you see the level of participants, a lot of them, they're here now, were there yesterday, when you see the level of discussion and the sophistication of the kinds of things we're talking about doing for our collective good. There were city representatives at that meeting, there was a representative from the environmental community. I mean, I think for all of us, we have put in play a system, a process, I think that is light years ahead of anybody in the state, and I think that one of the, one of the comments I heard yesterday, and I heard it when I was down at Aqua with another group, is that there are entities out there that are willing to help us get this problem solved at a very attractive front-end price, because they realize the world is bigger than the GMA, and they can take our success story and multiply it out into a market throughout the Western U.S. and to Arizona and others, because we're all going to face this problem. And we're at the vanguard of that, and we'll be able to benefit from a lot of that work that's being done. And when you look at the investment in the automated reporting system that yesterday was presented to the group, here's probably about $30 million worth of development backroom costs, and they're going to push that in our direction if we choose them, and it's not costing us $30 million. But they will, they will recoup that over time as they work their way through the state and other agencies. So my hat's off to you, Matt, and to you, Edgar. You guys have picked up the ball in this area, and I appreciate it. Okay?
Great, great benefits if we do it right, and great problems if we do it wrong.
There you go.
I just want to encourage folks to keep coming to meetings.
Keep coming.
There's been a plethora of meetings to go to in the last couple of years, but it's important, the participation.
Okay. Last item is item number four. Second to last item is number four.
On that one, can I just make one comment on the group? There's a name that's reversed, Shawna Epstein.
Epstein, yes. Shawna was there yesterday, and she didn't change it either, so.
Well.
You got to change that. It's.
Her first, her last name isn't Shawna.
Yeah. Shawna Epstein, yeah. Okay, let's go to item number four. Tully.
Item number four, Chair Mulholland, is simply the annual award which recognizes an individual or entity that contributes to protecting groundwater, enhancing water quality, or assisting the agency in efforts to manage water resources within the GMA. And all this item is looking for our two members to sit on an ad hoc committee via teleconference to consider nominees and select a recipient for the John K. Flynn Groundwater Stewardship Award for this year.
Okay. What we have, the way we've done it is a teleconference process with the two directors who go through a list and whittle it down. Who would like to be on that committee?
Chair, Chair, I might. I've sat on that committee, it seems like almost every year. I'd like to offer it to someone else. It feels like, I don't want to take all the thunder.
I'd like to.
Perhaps Director Waters would like to do that.
No, 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 no. My name is on this list a lot, too.
And the supervisor.
Jean West is not here to protect himself.
There's the person.
Right? Andy?
Somebody want to nominate Mr. West?
Snooze, you lose, right? So.
I'd be happy to. This is not the best time of year for me to be tackling this, and I say that in good faith, but I mean, I'm happy to do it, but if Director Craven, if you wouldn't mind doing it this year, I'd certainly pick it up.
I'll tell you, my daughter's getting married in 10 days.
Okay.
It's a big time for me, and the next day, I'm leaving for Spain for two and a half weeks, so I'm not sure I'm going to be able to make it on phone calls.
Given that.
I'll do it with you if you want.
There you go. So either Dave will do it, or I'll do it with Jean, but we're going to suck Jean into this by default.
So I'll make a motion to move my position and one of the two volunteers?
Let Director Bennett do it.
You can make the motion to Jean, Jean, and either Dave or I. Pick your choice.
Oh, I.
That, because you're busy, and I get that.
You know, I'm just going to suggest Director Borchard, only as a representative of agriculture out there, and given where we are, I think it is really appropriate for you to be involved. Congratulations, the great faith I have in you.
And you would include Director West in that?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
I'll vote next year.
Yeah.
Thank you, I think.
Okay. That's the selection of the committee. Al, do we need a vote on that? No. All right. That's the direction. We have item number five, administrative reports. Any comments, questions, input from the audience? Motion to receive.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I've just asked, remind board members that with the Association of Water Agencies Symposium, if you could please respond back to Jessica whether or not you'd be able to attend.
Okay.
And then on item B, which is Form 700 filing, just a reminder to file your Form 700, please. Thank you.
Okay. All right, very good. A motion, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Okay, folks, thank you. Jessica.